Grand Junction City Council Law Call Order. Sue agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Prove that agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Comments, free notes?
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you guys for putting my stuff on the agenda that I brought to your attention. I didn't see any of that. And second of all, I have a nomination for the vacancy tonight and I have proof or and the approval to do it for them. If you take nominations tonight for the council seat.
Anybody else? Hold this discussion regarding Grand Junction Fire Department and Grand Junction City Council.
I've got it.
Paul.
You just hadn't looked at me yet. Sorry, I didn't see anything. Why don't you want to start this meeting by giving everybody kind of a follow-up information regarding some of our special council meetings we've had with the department, the fire department? After receiving a call from Sheriff Jack Williams, myself and Paula met with him, Brett Curzy and Jason McDowell on Tuesday the sixth, and then the council followed up with a private meeting with Brett on Thursday December eighth. From these meetings, a following has transpired. The fire department informed us that they were allowed to spend $10,000 without council approval. That information was taken from an ordinance book dated 2004. There is nothing in its 2017 ordinance books that states this, so sometime between 2004, 2017, that ordinance was removed. We also now have been informed that the trustees of the township that our fire department protects have been making a donation directly to the fire department. At some point during the last 20 years, the city stopped billing the township and therefore they're not legally required to pay us, so they donated money. Nobody is sure when and why this changed. Obviously, it happened before this council's time. The fire department has agreed to forward the money that they have received from the township in the year 2000, in the, just this year, 2022, back to the city to be put in the fire department budget. Understand, this does not mean the fire department is losing any money. They are not losing any money. The money they have received and we will get has to be used for fire protection and nothing else, as it cannot be placed in any other portion of our budget. It is simply changing hands. Because of this disagreement that has occurred, we have discovered a win-win situation for both the fire department and the city. It has never, it has now been addressed how much, how little the townships are paying for fire protection. And from these meetings, we know there is a formula that the state provides and we can follow. And we will have more information to update you with when that is all finalized. The city will provide an updated budget report to the fire department, so they will know what is in their budget at all times. Better lines of communication are hopefully being opened between the fire department and the city council. Ordinances will be reviewed and updated accordingly. It's never been the council desire, the council's desire to pick on, punish, or get rid of the fire department. The council is simply trying to get a better handle on the expenses in all areas of our budget. We were elected to do the best job for the city and we're trying to do just that. It's not always easy to confront an issue, but in this case, the outcome should be better for everyone.
Vote on place for Summerfest to hold their event. Flash insurance documents.
I'll jump in here. So we got ahold of Joan St. Clair to find out, and I don't know if you guys could talk to her or not, but just to find out.
I'm sorry. She's doing all of our insurance for this.
Okay, so, because we asked her to send a list of stuff that we should have before we follow through with this. General liability policy with at least a million per occurrence limits. And we can give you a copy of this so that you have it. The city should be named as an additional insured. They'll need to provide the city with a certificate of insurance, naming the city as certificate holder and additional insured. The intent, the intent would be to cover all of their fundraising events as well as Summerfest under an annual policy. And then, of course, your liquor license, you know about that because you have that last year. Did you know any of that before now? Okay, so, so do you have all of those insurance?
She's working on that.
She's working on that, okay. So, are we voting to just allow them to have the Summerfest at the old school grounds like they had it last year? Is that what we're voting on tonight? Is that your understanding?
Yeah.
We're voting tonight?
Okay, that, okay.
Do we feel like we need this insurance information in our hands before we vote or we don't?
What happens?
It's the same insurance person that does the city's.
Right, but we also have to have it filed, do we not, like the best? I don't know.
We can put a stipulation on it that they get us the insurance information by February first? I mean, that should be more than enough time.
Is it?
I mean, that's enough time for it.
I'd like to know who's going to cover if we, if we have any damages. I mean, you're going to have a tractor pull. I know that's all your property. The thing that I want to know is, you know, they pull off the side of the road and offload one of them. We get ruts there or we break off a portion of the road. Who's going to cover that?
That, wouldn't that be our insurance that would cover that, you think? But not the cities, but like the, the, our liability would.
I hope nothing like that happens, but could.
No, I get what you're saying, but I can confirm with Joan tomorrow, but yeah.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Sure.
Would you want to arrange this vote with this?
Yeah, I, I would like to make a motion that we allow the Summerfest committee to hold their event at the old school grounds with the idea that they will provide us with all the insurance that our insurance carrier has asked for by the first of February.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye. What's the date of that? Is it the first, last week?
First weekend, first weekend.
Okay. And then it's always fourth and fifth?
Yeah. Fifth and sixth, I can't even.
It's okay, first weekend it is.
Okay, vote on a 144 CHI matching grant program.
I'd like to make a motion to vote on that, but before we do, I would like to say a couple of things. And the one being that we run into more problems with different costs on cleaning up different properties. A lot more than we anticipated, and at this time, myself, I'm not going to vote for it because we just don't have the funds. I'd rather the fund that we're getting in use it, we might need it. So, that's what I wanted to bring up. Other than that, let's, I just make a motion to vote.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment, but I, I'm for it with one exception. And the exception that I don't like in that is the fact that you're willing to give money to landlords. I don't like that because a landlord rents in order to make money typically. And having been a landlord in Des Moines, Iowa, a lot of that stuff, they can write off on taxes and I feel like we're giving them extra. We like the place to look nice, but I just don't, I don't like the idea of giving money to landlords when they're renting. But I'm, go ahead, Mary.
Can I give you a little pushback?
Sure.
It's all, it would only be allowed for one landlord. It's not like they're going to be able to take all of their houses and say, I'm going to apply for this house and this house and this house.
Well, I don't even like it for one. Because they're making, they're making money.
Well, it's not automatic, it's not a slam dunk. We as a committee
Yeah.
meet and go through these and we score them.
Yeah.
That's how we look to score them ourselves too. There was a lot of conversation on it, on our end, because a lot of people brought up, and the reason that we voted for it to encourage is, I'm from Grand Junction and the biggest eyesores in town are the rental properties.
Oh, I agree. I'm in a rental property.
And so, what you have to do is you have to incentivize these people to invest their own money because we're 50/50 grants. So they're putting their money into it, we're incentivizing them to update the outside, to improve our environment that we live in, encourage people to move here, hopefully increase population and prove their overall experience in town. When people drive through, what are they going to see? They're going to pick out the negatives. And what are the negatives? They're the rentals. It's not if you own your home, own a home, you're going to take better care of it.
Well, I rent.
So.
And I have a problem with my landlord
And so.
in the property.
That, that's the thoughts behind it, is to encourage them to keep up on the properties and not let them fall to nothing, which then is, is not very visually appealing for them.
Okay. I hear you. I don't agree with you.
Is, is this something that we could jump into next year? Right now, we have been slammed with some, like Kenny said, some money issues that we were not anticipating for this year. And is it something that next year you can come back to us and hey, things are looking a little bit better? We've got, you know, a little bit, maybe more wiggle room than what we have this year?
I mean, I want to speak for the group. You know, I, I missed the last meeting because my stomach's in the hospital, so I was unable to hear the present with these guys, but you guys, there's a really big opportunity for Grand Junction here. And what I mean by that is, Grand Junction has the most to gain from this program. We are outside raising money. We're here asking for 10% of free money that's given to the city. But we have gone, in turn, have gone to other communities outside of Grand Junction, asked to raise money to support you guys. And with that, Grand Junction will get over 62% of the funds outside of the community that we are bringing to you guys that you're not pledging. So, I mean, the community is what's going to get hurt by you guys not supporting this program.
It's just a bad target, other things going on, other costs that we didn't really expect to happen to skyrocket. I don't know economy or what, but just, I don't think the money's there.
So are you saying you've already budgeted next year's through?
No, we, with some stuff that we're doing right now, that the, it went from maybe a couple thousand to 12,000. And we, we just, we're a little leery.
I just want to underscore what he said.
I, I agree.
A lot of the genesis of this happened in this community. Which took it to the other communities and they, they jumped on board.
I'm just telling you where I'm at, okay?
I understand that. But now others have added to it. The county has added.
We're still, I'm still the same way, okay?
Okay.
I don't.
We've got support from Louis Dreyfus Springs. We've went, we've got a three-year grant. Every community outside of Grand Junction has approved this program. And this is the program, this is the community that we were really hoping to support this, that we had big dreams to do.
One of the problems is, we are acquiring properties that then we're trying to clean up as a town cleanup, so what we're doing then is taking money away from a property that we can clean up, tear down and all that, to give it to somebody else so that they can make their house look nice, which is, is great, but then that means by doing this, that means that we're not going to be able to get rid of the trailer house on a main street that's a little dumpy little thing that needs gotten rid of.
So our program also, you can apply and tear a house down and we will fund it. So if an individual in here owns a building and buys their neighbor's home, they can apply and they can tear that home down with our, our matching grant.
Entirely? I mean, if it costs $20,000 to get rid of it?
Up to another $2,000.
Oh, I just thought, well, okay, we're not even in the ballpark there. You know what it costs to tear down something in the hall and all. That's why we got the problem we got right now. We thought it was going to be a couple thousand dollars, now it's 12,000.
Is this the problem, the west end of town? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. Totally unexpected.
Okay, but we want to, yeah, I, I, I can see what you're saying, but we're, we're hoping that, you know, a little snowball, a little bit of the funds that you get you would distribute to us and, and that might snowball people to be excited about this project.
What, what we're trying to do though is tell you where we're at, we're just kind of hoping maybe, maybe we'll be able to do it next year, but this year, we don't feel like we're able to do it.
No, yeah.
So you're asking for 10%? What about less than 10%?
I don't know, I mean, all the other communities have committed 10%.
Okay, so here's, here's what I just want to say to you.
I'd be open.
Here's what I have to say. I don't, I don't know the other community's financial situation. I don't know and I don't really care. I mean, I'm just like, I, 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 I'm glad that they can, and I'm not saying we can't, but you can't, you cannot compare us to other places because I have no idea what their situation is.
You're really putting us in a difficult situation and I'm trying to appreciate what you're saying. But we've been out and we've gotten $5,000 from Green County Community Development Corporation. We've got $15,000 from the Louis Dreyfus funds. We've gotten $2,500 from Home State Bank. So if you're not going to, I'll call it play ball, I'm not sure that we should be taking those funds that were given to us and give you a percentage of that. I, I don't want to sound retaliatory, but we need to be fair and transparent with the other communities and what they've done.
We're just trying to tell you we don't feel like doing it this year. We're, we're just in a situation and we want to wait.
Okay, and I'm telling you that I'm not going to divide that Louis Dreyfus money and give to you.
Fuck it.
Okay.
We're, we're. I thought we were all working on the same level here to improve the community. Now, I'm hearing about a property on so far west end of town. Most people don't see that property. We're trying to.
Regardless if you can see it or not, it still needs to be cleaned up. Just because it's down in that end of town, a lot of people forget about it and not do anything.
Right.
I, I have a question. I believe, and just remind me, the last time you came, you said that if we didn't spend the money, that that it would carry over to the next year, is that right?
Carry over what you as a council gave from your municipality funds from Grove Green County. We would not redistribute that to the other communities.
All the money stays same.
What is 10% of our?
We only got 45, what, 45,000 last year from Grove Green County.
About 4,500.
Something like that.
45,000 something.
Yeah.
And remember, Grove Green County decides every year whether we distribute that to the municipalities or not. That's not a given.
And see, that's part of it too. So what happens if we say, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll sign up for this 10% and then we don't get that? Maybe we get 15, maybe we get 10. What happens then that we're?
It's still just 10%.
It's 10, okay, it's always this 10%.
Just 10%. It's a sharing program.
Well, having moved back here, last year, Horizons had done work with Iowa State and they had a program where they were going to try to get us money to help us with housing. I was not on the council at that time and the council refused. They, in my opinion, big mistake. And I'm in favor of you guys. $4,500, if that's 10%, is a drop in the bucket. I know, I know, we need all our money, but we need to show the community that we believe in it, that, that we'll never be where we were, but we can improve it and hopefully we will get more people to move into the community. I, I think 4,500 is fine.
And 4,500 will be coming back to you from the individuals.
So your 4,500 turns into $9,000 invested in improvements in Grand Junction. Plus the outside funds that we've already raised, that we've got commitments for.
I mean, you're sacred.
Now you guys get 60% of.
Don't look at me.
I mean, that's 60% of free money.
The motion's still up here to have a vote. I vote no.
I think we're lucky we got some day in the morning to work to do this.
I vote yes. We need them more than they need us.
I'm, I'm I'm wavering here.
Are you going this way around?
No, I don't want to.
I'm sure not, I'm sure not. As much as I don't want to give up the, the 4,500 because I really feel like we need it for some other things and I hope I'm not chopping my foot off by doing this. But I'll agree to it. I'll agree to it.
Kenny, you want to change your vote?
No, we need the money for other things.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, just like Paula Waverine, we do not have the money for this. And I'm not sure that I just, what I'm struggling with is the fact of who's going to actually apply and use this. The people that need to improve their homes, I don't know if they've got the gumption to do it and to, you know what I'm saying? I'm not going to come to you and say, hey, can I get a money to do something to my place? I'm just not going to.
You could.
I could, but I'm not going to. I'm just saying, I'm not going to, not, because I can afford my own stuff. And I'm just trying to envision the homes that need it, I don't think they're going to have the gumption to do it, so that's why I just.
Is this, you don't pick them because of their financial status?
There's no financial.
It's not like half a town.
So with our program, most housing grant programs, you have to, there's income barriers. You make more than $40,000, you don't qualify. There is no standards, there's no financials. It is just on a week basis, we have an application and it's based off safety, location, first, you know, need, appearance. We have five or six different categories and they're just scored and they're first come, first served based on highest percentages. Everybody votes.
If this, excuse me, if this passes, I will say this, I hope that the community then understands that maybe something that the city was going to do, acquire another property and get that cleaned up, we might not be able to do that because we have committed money this direction. So there's only so much money to go around, so don't, you know, I guess, don't be hollering at us when you might not have something done that you wanted done. We can't, we can't provide it for everybody. We just don't have it. If it passes.
Well, it's up to us to get the word out, ask the committee to, so. And that is the next phase to start, but we've had to go have our meetings with all the cities, so.
When do you need this money?
Well, it would come basically what, July comes as the, as number of payments from, I guess.
Okay, so you don't, you don't start this whole program until July?
Application. The process starts January 1st. We, you can submit your applications by April 15th. And then after April 15th, we review them, we approve them, we notify the homeowners. Then they have to be paid out before December, I believe, 28th. They want, year, year in, year out, cleared out, everything in and out, and we start over the next year. So the thing is with this, this is going to be an annual commitment that we're going to come to you and ask for support. We don't want to do this one year and you guys waiver and say no, because it's, it's not feasible for us to put in the hours that we're doing to have a yes once, a no, yes, no, yes, no. We want to have this as a partnership with you guys and go forward with it.
The same people can apply again for, for the work on the same house.
Once a year.
So what if they don't do what they say they're going to do?
They don't get the money.
They don't get the money.
So then.
So they have to put their, so they have to put their money up front first. So it's not like they're going to come and get the money from you first. So they have to put their money up.
They have to put their money up and then we fund it afterwards with an inspection. So we're putting a lot of time into this, our own personal time. And like I said, we're doing four communities. Not just one, so.
And let's say, out of all the money that you have for this community, you only have five people apply this year and actually follow through with whatever. The money that then is left in there, it carries over to the next year? Is that how that works? Or does it, you know, because you didn't use all of our money, then next year instead of 4,500, we only have to pay 2,000? How does, how does that work?
Normally with your money, if it's not used in Grand Junction, it would, in the past with other communities, it's brought back, you can bring it back to the table and then you guys can use that to bring it back to us. Or you, you know, we can keep it, but vice versa, we can bring it back if we don't use it.
You, so you can or you, you will bring it back?
If you guys will accept it back, normally the committee that I'm in at AUGD, we bring it back with the idea that then you can bring it back to us the next year when we bring the funds back if we don't use it. But when you look at, you know, if you're donating $4,000, you can get, that's only four homes. You know, I've already talked to more than four people about the idea and they're in support of it, so I don't think you're going to have any issues with us spending $4,000.
We're not, we're just getting back the money that we.
Yes, that's correct.
Not the money that say Louis Dreyfus or Home State or anything, I don't know, whatever.
Because that money then would be spent, since it's a county, it would be spent in other communities if there's other applications because it's a student or a bank in Jefferson or GCDC is a Green County or wherever the need is. But originally, Grand Junction gets 6,500 brought to the table. If the application's there, they're going to get the first 6,500. If there's no applications from those outside communities, they to the other communities that want to use it. So all the money gets used every year. Our goal is to have 0% left at the end of the year. We don't want.
And Derek, let me confer with you before I share with them. We would not be requesting funds from them until we were ready to pay out. Right, so that would probably be December or maybe December when people submit.
In the summer, in the summer, first of all, because most people, they're not going to start the project until May, June, July, you know, so by the time they submit and, on, again, in AUGD, most of the time it'll be paid out till.
Because it has to be, you have to come and see, look and see what they're going to do first before.
So, and the process, they submit an application and then they have to submit pictures and we review that as a community. We vote. And at the end, after the job is complete, one of us, team members, will go out, do the inspection, take pictures and then we document and compile the information of what the total costs are. So in the community AUGD where I live, we've been doing this for six years and they've put in over half a million dollars and the city started with $10,000 for this community AUGD. Now they're up to donating $30,000. This, the community is supporting that and they've gotten back over half a million dollars in returns in improvements in the town in just six years. And that's from the community buying into the program. So it, it works, but we, as a committee, have to do a good job of selling this to the community. And the community has to be able to support it along with the city. And if the city doesn't, you know, support it or the community doesn't, then it doesn't work.
We still have a voter.
I'm going to vote yes, hesitantly. Not sold on it, I'm just not, but I guess we're, got our hands right behind our back. And I'm going to second what Paula said, that when we can't do some other projects because of this or something, we're, we're going to have to really be thinking about what we have to do and not do.
Well, you got to think of it as it's money that you wouldn't get otherwise.
But we are getting it, you know, we are getting it.
Next year you will.
Yes, but hey, I feel like, I feel like it's kind of a double-edged sword because you're sitting here and telling us one thing and I get it.
Yeah.
But now I feel like, okay, maybe we, you're going to not let us get the money or something and it's a done deal, if we pass it, we're going to make it go, but I just. If we pass it, we're going to make it go, but I just, I know that people are going to be concerned because we aren't going to be able to have the money to do something else that we want to do. And I just want everybody out there to know, we're trying our darndest to be able to feed everything that needs to be fed and that's, that's all there is to it. So we passed it, well, hopefully, hopefully it works out great.
I think it will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote on leasing or buying a tractor. I'm going to ask Rod, do you respect on this? You want, you're up, buying or leasing a tractor or?
I say lease, that would be an option because if we like it, we can buy it. If we don't like it, we can get something different. We're trying to find out what horsepower fits us and what we have now does not.
There's got to be at least a hundred horsepower for the, for the generator, for the, thing that's got to run the sewer if it goes out.
So you're saying lease with an option to buy?
If we can do that, yes. Can we do that?
You want to add something, Derek?
No, I've just been supplying information, Rod, so of the products that we offer for leasing. That way he has a.
How does, you, you passed out a thing, how does this work here with the man to vote?
So I gave Rod, there's an application, it's just a, a simple product. If you do want to go the leasing route, there's just a simple application that I gave him and it's a basically a one-day turnaround. If you acquire a tractor that you like, you can finance lease up to seven years, annual payments. There's no, a couple notes here, there are annual payments. You can either have an, an option at the end of the balloon to purchase out at the end, or you can have it over the seven years with it and just a traditional type of loan, traditional loan and just have your payments the same. Normally, most people go with the balloon payment at the end because it cheapens up your payment. But there is no prepayment on it, so if you choose, if you want to buy it off early, you can. There's free.
No penalty.
There's no penalty. There's free modifications. So say you set up on a three-year and the budget, like we just talked about, gets tight. You can go in and modify it up to five or seven years with no cost.
But you leased it for three or four years and decided to buy it, but you buy it as a, at the used tractor price, right?
That would be yes, at the, your standard, what is the original deal that you set up with.
Appreciate, you know.
Through the.
Then we go back to the original.
And I said with that, it's just a simple application here.
Did you say what the interest rate was on that? Did I miss it?
I don't have one currently until you apply, but they said they're probably in the, he talked to him today, it'd probably be somewhere in the fours.
And that rate will stay the same, it won't be?
Like you said, and he did tell me, it's a basically a one-day turnaround, they wire the funds straight to the implement dealer.
Even though we're going up a half a percent tomorrow.
Like you said, that was just today. You haven't applied yet.
Well, I like the, I like the idea of leasing up with the option to buy it right from the written into it.
And after we look over everything, I think that we're just smart to stay with readers. I think that they have, you know, worked well with us, given us a, a good deal on this. We're staying right here in our community. It's something, if we have to have it fixed or right here, we can drive a tractor to there. I think that that is the smartest thing that we can do is, is stay right with them. I guess I would make a motion to lease this Kubota from readers. And then the grapple and pallet forks, we can see maybe if we can apply for a grant to get those. It comes with a bucket and I think if, if we lease it through readers, then it goes someplace else. That becomes our leasing place. It isn't, readers doesn't lease it to us. They have their own company that, that leases it, if I understand that right. So if we go with People's Bank there again, it would be right here. We could run a payment across the street.
Without checking on insurance? I mean, for, what insurance would be on this new tractor if we get it?
I don't believe so because we have to do something. So I, I didn't check on it.
I don't know what our insurance is now on the tractor that we have, but I, it has worked out fairly good for us.
Yeah.
Having that insured. We have to have it insured.
Right.
But I think there's another piece of equipment we need with those other two pieces that's just as important. And that is a good back blade. One we got looks like it's been bent around a tree.
Does this tractor come with a back blade or that's, okay, so maybe that's something that we can add on to apply for a grant for all three of those to go with the tractor. So I make a motion that we go with this tractor from readers, this Kubota. And I would say go with People's Bank for our lease agreement.
It doesn't say back, do you?
Right, he said that we don't have.
I'm just asking about, we got one, but it's worthless, you know.
It's, it's separate, so we'll have to do something about that. And I, I don't know how many months is a smart thing to lease for. Anybody?
Well, I suppose the longer you lease, the less your payments would be. Well, I mean, if you lease it for three years, it's going to be higher.
Right.
How old's the one we got?
What's that?
How old's the tractor we got?
But if you want to check out and see if there's a lease bond with.
Five years, so.
If there's a penalty, you can buy it.
Early.
Early.
But there isn't one if we go with People's Bank. If we buy it out early, there's not one for them, so.
But with readers, there would, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I said if we go with People's Bank, they're right here. So I was making a motion to, to go with.
But the real thing is got cheaper insurance. I don't know, they might have a corporate.
I talked to him out there before on insurance, they don't really like to, they said it'd probably be cheaper to get your own.
That's what we did before as we went through.
I'm just throwing that in.
Here's the deal, we need a higher horsepower tractor for the whole city.
Case we have a problem with the sewer.
And, and the tractor we have doesn't.
Won't do it.
Won't do it. So as far as I'm concerned, we're going to have to pay the insurance. It is what it is. And so I'm going to second that we lease a Kubota and go with.
I.
I.
Any, any idea how many months we want to go with? Do we need your, five, five year, go with a five-year lease? Okay. Thank you for doing the research on that.
Yes, yes, a lot of research.
Lot of work.
Okay, vote on approved resolution, twenty twenty-two, day, one, two, one, two, day, zero, one.
We can vote on it and I guess anybody that is interested just has to submit a written application, just a written statement or something that they're interested and turn it in up to the clerk's office. And if she's not here, there's a box outside that you can drop it into.
And then what do we, what do we vote on, I'm sorry?
Just.
To fill the vacancy.
Fill the vacancy.
Approved resolution.
It's already been advertised without a decision.
It has been advertised. It was in Friday's paper. It's been advertised. Okay, so I, I make a motion to approve to fill the vacancy as soon as we get somebody.
I.
Vote to approve annual financial report.
This report was supposed to be in December first. We're a titch behind on that, but it's just the end of the, the year and it tells all of the expenses and budget and all of that. So I make a motion to approve the financial report.
I second it.
I.
Vote to approve resolutions, twenty twenty-two, day, one, two, one, two, day, zero, two, to approve city's street finance report.
Yes, and this report is anything that has to do with the streets. Snow file, lights for the streets, payroll, street hatching, it all has to do with everything with the street. So I make a motion to approve this street finance report.
I, I got a question there real quick. Everybody's got this one?
Yeah, it's on, which page is it, Kenny? Yeah, I can't see it.
Page's two or six.
Okay.
Now, as of today, we have that amount of money in that fund?
That.
Is that what we've taken in for all year?
That's a really good question. I'm saying it is for the year. I, if I had to guess, I would say it's taken in for the year.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't.
Yeah, I just.
Out of my league. But that's my understanding. And Mary will be in Wednesday night and Thursday night and she can explain it better than I can. I'm sort of muddling through.
Can I vote I for that other one?
Okay.
All the last one, vote there.
Do I need to vote?
Um, some, which one of you guys said second? Was it you?
Sure, I second it.
Okay, and then you, okay.
I think we all said it together, but that's okay.
Vote, excuse me, vote to approve resolution, twenty twenty-two, day, one, two, one, two, day, zero, three, to approve municipal water and plant budget.
I guess if they're.
I guess I'm confused. I didn't realize that we can do that. I thought they operated independently.
We did it last year. She brought me the information and said that we've done last year.
So we just have to go through that. I make a motion to approve it, approve the resolution, twenty twenty-two dash one, two, one, two, dash zero, three.
I second it.
I, I understand. But next year, I want this information before the meeting, not right before the meeting, I want to look at it.
Did you have a question on something?
I just, I, I want some time to look it over.
Okay.
Vote on Murphy bid on removing debris from the running house.
Okay, we thought that we had the date set up where the fire department was going to burn the property for us and we were all set to go. We had an asbestos check on that. The asbestos check came back negative and a citizen of Grand Junction turned us in saying that there was asbestos in the house or made the D N R question us. And so now our choice was to either pay for a full asbestos check and then if there comes back asbestos then on someplace in there, then we still have to haul it away or save that money and just have a bid to haul it away. So.
We know who turned us in.
Pardon me?
Do we know who turned us into the D N R?
No, it doesn't really.
Possibly.
Doesn't make any difference.
Possibly, possibly.
Still ain't going to do anything.
So anyway, and so Laura has got the sealed bid for this. We only had one bid. We did go to Murphy's in Jefferson and then we had asked nieces if they would have, if they were interested and, and they were not interested in doing that. So it's going to be quite a bit more expensive to.
I'm not sure we talking about.
She's got to open it up.
I get to seal it. I have it open.
Sorry, Laura.
Crisis ready.
Yeah, that's right, sure. Yeah.
All right. So this is what it says. Bid to demo house at two oh six six street south in Grand Junction. Clean up and dispose of all debris, fill in basement hole, put six, six of good black dirt.
Six inches.
Six, six inches of good black dirt on top. Take out three trees. And those are the three trees that are closest to the house that just are dead and need to be removed. Haul to city dump and then both dispose of them. And this bid is for thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
I asked a question, but maybe no one ever put it in the bid there. You know, there's a certain procedure for closing the sewer and it has to be done right. It mentions nothing in there about that.
That would be something to talk to, well, just a second. Would Dean know that at the, I mean, would Dean be able to help answer that question?
Isn't that something that they would do for us, the line plant?
I don't know. I mean, that was more, the sewer was more, that's a sewer.
Yeah, but they know what sewer lines are more than anybody and they'd be able to.
There's a certain procedure.
Just a second, Rod, please, talk again when you know.
I had talked to Dean and Dean said that was already done. The sewer stuff is already done, okay.
It was already done.
It's already done.
We did it.
You have to talk to Dean.
Laura, give me that.
I did a date.
Thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty.
Thank you. And so.
What usually happens, that private line goes to the main. And we've had that when we did all these.
Had a lot of problems with that stuff.
And the excavator guy, he finds it. When he's cleaning all that out, he finds it. And they cover it or plug it or.
Plug it.
Plug it before they can put the black dirt and dirt filled back up.
We might want to think about that too whenever they, who's ever going to do the grocery store. It's just, I mean, it's really.
I can't even broach that.
No, but it's just something that has to be done right. Otherwise you get that down in your sewer, then you got problems.
Grocery store is not our concern right now. I get it, this is our concern. I'm just going to make a motion, we've got to get this area cleaned up and we don't have any other way to do it. So I'm going to make a motion that we hire Murphy at this bid.
I second it.
I would put in there for, for, for the sewer.
I.
I.
The mayor.
No, I have one more.
Twenty eighty agreement between city of Grand Junction and city of Dana.
Yes. The twenty-eighty agreement between Dana and Grand Junction should have been re-signed October first last year. They have not signed it. They don't seem to be answering phone calls and that. And so what we have been instructed is in order to void this out, we have to cancel this agreement. And then it's my understanding that they have thirty days to get back to somebody and sign a new agreement, whether it's us or other, somebody else. So I am making a motion to cancel the twenty-eighty agreement between the city of Grand Junction and the city of Dana.
Okay. I.
I.
Brad, go ahead, please.
Just, and you, just to make sure.
Yeah.
Everything's good. The city does need to, I'll make sure where this running, send out official.
Notify them.
Notice notification that, and thirty days is.
Is that something that our attorney has to send out or can we just send that out ourselves instead of, hey, we just canceled you?
So after talking to Sheriff Williams, my recommendation would be to go to the sheriff's office and have it.
A certified letter, then.
Yes, coming from, please certify the sheriff.
It has to be hand delivered and signed.
To, to the mayor of Dana, yes.
Okay, okay.
So that would be something you're in charge of.
Yeah, there you go.
You put in whatever reason why, if they want, you just don't say, we canceled it.
Well, they never signed, yeah, they never re-signed the agreement. And so the only way to get them to either sign it or do something with it is to cancel it. And that's what he said, correct? I mean, that was my understanding of what.
That is correct. The agreement is going up until that date or until either party gives thirty days of notice, which is the same as you're right. which is the same as you were right.
Yeah, and so that's where we're at, okay. So.
Mayor, I have, I'll be up on you, but I have nothing, we'll have to leave the council to get some.
Just, I, I don't know if I thanked everybody that helped with planting the trees, the people that donated food. So if I thanked you, I'm gonna thank you again, just to make sure I was greatly appreciated. And everybody that came out to plant the trees, I appreciate that too. And I appreciate Terry Heffley for writing that down.
Rod, you got anything to add?
No, yeah, I got a lot.
Okay.
First of all, I wanna say thank you to fire department for helping burn the city down, I appreciate it. And then I wanna say thank you to the city council members for putting up with this stuff. You guys go through a lot, and I see it, and I appreciate everything you guys do, and I really, really mean that. I'm not trying to brown those. I'm just saying, I like what they do. They're trying to improve the city, and I say, we do. So I appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
Now, got the dump truck fixed, got the pickup truck, the weight on that was, it went bad, got that fixed. That's really about it. We're just kinda waiting to see what happens with all the abandoned houses and stuff like that.
You're taking inventory of all the tools?
All the tools, almost all the tools, probably about eighty percent. So we're about down there. That's about it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Rod.
Well, we appreciate the reports, but his report makes it easier for us to keep track of stuff.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, library.
She couldn't make it, so I've got the report here for anybody that wants to look at it.
I'm gonna do it.
I didn't bring my glasses, Derek.
I, I will make this comment, she is still waiting to care for Mary about that spreadsheet for her expenses and stuff, so that she can, uh.
Her budget report, you're saying, her monthly budget report? Okay, fire department.
You don't know what?
Oh, I, I can look, but I mean, that's.
Okay, fire department.
No, I don't have much, the trucks are in the process of getting fixed right now, the pre-pumps are, um, that'll be done this week. Uh, just wanna say thank you to the community for everybody that came over for our Christmas, saw Santa. We handed out six ham, six turkeys. Um, and you guys got my report as we discussed, and we discussed more in-depth one if you'll be in January, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave here in a second.
I.
It'll be nothing here for. Same distance you do over.
You're not gonna.
That's a little longer.
I'm gonna get that back.
Brad, you were.
It's, you see what they said about their equipment? Their processes, yeah, if they still offer, they're gonna call, they're gonna. Oh, I would be surprised if you go turn up your shirt. Maybe that's a. Charlie, that's all you gotta do, figure it out, there you go. How was that round for? It was all, yeah, I pulled it off and cleaned it around it.
Okay.
Some of the, and then I stuck it back down in there, so I think that's semi-trucky today. Cause I can see where the wheels. It's moving. That's good.
Till tomorrow, yeah.